Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for February the 16th, 2023. It is now 7:00 p.m. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next call the walls, starting on my right.
Tom McSmirgley, alternate.
Brian Fandem, Commissioner.
Leanne Brozzi, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we're going to do general public participation. This is a time when the public may address the Commission for items not on the agenda. If there is anyone here tonight or anyone online that would like to address the Commission on items not on the agenda, this is a time to do so. Please raise your hand. Anyone here? Raise your hand. Anyone online? For public, general public participation. Seeing none, we'll move along to our public hearings. We have a full agenda tonight with public hearings. So we're talking about now. This is EFP 2022-03, file number 110, 125 Gardner Road. This is an excavation fill permit. This application, this public hearing has continued since February the 2nd. Do we have any new items?
No new additional exhibits, Mr. Chairman.
And for the applicant, we have...
Good evening, all. Chris Pulowski, Civil Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. Give me one second to get the PowerPoint up. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Pulowski, Civil Engineer with Soli Engineering, offices located here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. Here, hopefully for the final time, discuss the excavation fill permit for 125 Gardner Road. As of last hearing, we don't have any new updates for you all. Besides, we did go before Wetlands, and we did close the hearing, and they instructed staff to draft an approval. So again, just to briefly go over the project, the site is located to the north off of 25, we headed down Pepper Street, and then along Gardner Road. This is an aerial of the site. If you recall, we're seeking a two-year permit. We revised our permit down from the original five years that we were seeking down to. We've cut almost 30,000 cubic yards off of our export. We reduced the blasting and crushing. We've reduced the amount of hours. We really been trying to listen to your concerns and address them as they move along in our application. Our final number now is about 81,700 cubic yards of export, and again, over a two-year timeframe instead of the five years, which is the maximum allowed for the permit. And again, nothing has really changed in the plans from last time. If you recall, we just raised the entire site four feet in elevation. The stormwater faces and everything stayed the same. We didn't change any constructions or anything of that nature. With that, I'd like to just keep it short and sweet. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them right now.
Thank you, Chris. We'll go to the members of the Commission first for questions. Start on my right, Commissioner Smirgley.
None at this time.
No questions.
Did you pick a spot where you want that well?
Oh, yes. The well will be going in this corner.
You done it on a map?
Yeah, I don't have a map, but with admission of approval, we're happy to put it on the map. I remember you asked that, and I apologize. We didn't submit a revised plan, but we spoke with our client about it, and definitely going to be using a well for dust suppression.
The other question I have is where you're going to put the crusher?
The crusher is going to be located up in this area, far away from residential properties.
And you have that on the map, right?
Yes, that's on the map. That is the line.
All right.
Thank you.
And the crusher is going to have water?
Yes, dust suppression, sprinklers running all the time.
You're going to water the site?
I'm sorry?
You're going to water the site daily?
Yes, sprinklers, water truck, they'll both be present.
And so you have a pump system that you're going to put in there?
Yeah, so we'll, the well will serve two purposes. It's a great idea. I would use it on our sites as well. So it'll use the fill-in water truck. Water truck will drive around the site, and it has spray nozzles in the back, shoots down, and keeps the ground moist. We also have a series of hoses that connect to your typical sprinklers that spray like 75-foot radiuses. And then again, the, all the rock crushing equipment will have the sprinklers on the top to keep with dust suppression.
You're going to give us quarterly reports?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
My name.
Last time, I could be wrong, but weren't we supposed to get something about blasting?
We submitted a blasting plan. I apologize. I believe that.
Do we have the blast plan?
Yes.
You have the plan?
Yeah.
Do you have the plan? Who has the plan?
Some of us all distributed by staff.
We have it?
It should be a part of your package. It's been a few days, not long since that's been... There's a package, a few pages, description of how the blasting is going to take place, and there's also a reblast survey map that shows all the properties that'll be receiving the blast phase.
I saw that. I saw that.
Sorry?
I did. I saw that. Okay. You, like I discussed with you about the hours of operation.
Yep.
This Commission may put a certain requirement on hours.
That's fine. Ten to three, I think, is what we discussed last time, if I recall, for the crushing.
It's going to be five days a week?
Yes.
No crushing on Saturdays or Sundays?
Exactly.
Sundays, you can't do it anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Saturdays, I don't want that thing operating on the weekends. You got that down there, Rick?
Yes, sir.
You know, for two years.
That is correct, yep.
Finished in two years, right?
Correct.
Ended in two years.
Completely understand. If I agree, we reduce the... Listen, we're here to work with you guys, so, but I think it's sounding good that we're not going to extend it for two years. I completely understand. I hope to be here in a year. I hope to be here in a year with industrial buildings. That's our goal.
That sounds good to me, too. And nowadays, like, you know, perceptual plans, I'm not too much into them anymore.
No, I understand.
Getting out of that now, so.
There's only so many of these sites left, and I think we seem to have all of them, so we're...
Well, no, I understand that, but it seems like it never gets developed, you know? It gets there and never gets done.
I know, I know.
So that's what happens all over this town, so.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mayne.
Oh, it's my turn?
Well, again.
All right, so, all right, so.
Thank you, I wanted to make sure.
Well, I know, we heard, heard a lot. I'm off, but I got thrown off, so I'm good.
No questions.
Thank you all.
All right. Then, anything from staff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then I'm going to go to the public. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this excavation and fill permit for 125 Gardner Road, now is the time. Anyone here in person? Raise your hand. Anyone online? Raise your hand. Or make yourself otherwise known. Seeing none, then I have no other questions. We'll go back to you for who would like to close this hearing.
Awesome. Thank you all for working with us. We look forward to getting this project in the light.
Rick, can we close without a Wetlands permit?
They, they closed the hearing, and you'll have a favorable, they'll have a favorable resolution next Wednesday.
All right.
So, yeah, you can close it because it's closed, but we don't vote. That's right. You can't act on it tonight.
All right. We're going to close this hearing. Very good.
Thank you.
Moving on. SCP 2023-01, file number 16498, 4 and 7180 Main Street. This is special exemption permit. This is also continued from February the 2nd, 2023. Rick, do we have any new exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit number six, revised plans. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And for the applicant, we have...
Chairman Chris Phillips, Michigan Rescue LLC, offices at 10 Sackville Road in Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant. From Coop, our, this one, final. Chair, as you stated, this is a continuation. There was a couple of reasons we continued. One was that there were still some boards that had to finish voting on our application. So since the last time that we appeared before you, we have received the approvals for Monroe and Lynn Wetlands. We also last night received the approval from Trumbull Planning and Zoning, unanimous approval from Trumbull Planning and Zoning. So you are, you are the last board that we will need approval from for this project. See, that's the last. So that was one of the reasons. And the second was that there were some comments from the last presentation that we had to address and revisions to be made to the plans. Just to go through them, at least the, the ones I had noted from the last hearing. The first was with regard to fire department access, and there was a question about whether the fire marshals looked at this. So since that hearing, we have, we had a meeting with both fire marshals in both Trumbull and Monroe to go over the site plan, and they were comfortable with it. The one thing they asked us, which is on this revised plan, is this drive back here was wide and slightly. They gave us their vehicles that they would possibly take to the site. They asked us to do a truck turning plan for those vehicles. We did, and we expanded that area in that, which they requested. That was the change that they had wanted. But again, that was both fire marshals from both towns. It was a joint meeting. The other comment was with regard to a school bus waiting area, which we designated right there in that corner where our main entrance is. And I know there was also a comment about getting a crosswalk out to there, so we added a crosswalk. So anybody exiting the building can go through this crosswalk to get to the school bus waiting area. We've also contacted the bus companies from both towns to discuss this area, and this is where they would want to pick up children. School bus companies do not go onto private property. So, and we talked with them. They would pick up and drop off kids on the right side of, you're looking at the right side of Main Street. They would schedule their route, so that would both, no kid would have to cross Main Street to get to this site. Sidewalks were added to the plans. I know there was a comment. So the sidewalks are shown here on this plan. And just so you know, I noticed some talk about the Rails Trails that is over on the eastern side. Our property doesn't connect directly to Rails Trails. We hope that at some point in the future, we can work with that property owner that does have the connection to it to provide a direct connection from our site to Rails Trails. But just so you know, with the addition of these sidewalks, if the property to the north of us were to be developed, and your regs would require them to have sidewalks, you would then have a complete sidewalk connection to Rails Trails. So hopefully that, that happens sometime in the future. The monument sign is located right next to the school bus area, right?
Yeah, it's on the other side.
Oh, it's on the other side, sorry. Okay, on this side right here is the location of the monument sign. The bypass lane, it's paper for the bypass lane that we talked about, which was an improvement on Main Street, is over here in that. Just so you know, I know when we presented last time, we had talked about how this is similar to the one by Starbucks further off the road. The one by Starbucks is kind of man-made rather than actually being built out. This will actually be to DOT standards. It's actually a little wider than what you see over by Starbucks. So it would be a true bypass lane to the, to the state standards. And there was another comment with regards to a package room. We've added that. Definitely, that can be a different... Sorry. We do. Next up, you have... We added our, there's the exercise room here, which was a part of the plan, but it is, we revised this lobby a little bit. So here's the exercise room, here's the co-working area, and now there's a bug room specifically for packages. The other was that, the comment was that we confirmed that one elevator is sufficient for this number of units, and we did, we did confirm that. That is sufficient for, for this development. The final comment, and let me see if I can stop sharing. We have our expert, he should be on the line, hopefully, regarding the, the impact for the schoolchildren and how that methodology is, what is the methodology behind calculating how many kids will be in the school system? Is there a way I can stop sharing so I can see if he's in the, in the audience? He's joining us virtually. He's on yet? I don't see him.
Were there questions about that?
There was a question about how he comes to the number, because it's like a, there's a percentage of a child in the report. I mean, the way...
A child that were going, that was going to a school?
The, the way they do it is, basically, he looks at a development and similar developments, and if there's 10 studios and only one of them showing in the school district to have a child, then it's 10 per studio. That's the rate that we find in a studio that, that you will have schoolchildren. For every 10 studios, you'll have one kid. And then what he does is he takes that ratio and times it by the number of studios you have. And the same for one bedroom and two bedroom, adds up that total to get how many estimated kids we expect for a development for a like this. With this particular development, the thing I'll note is, one, there's no three-bedroom dwelling units because your regs don't allow it, and that was tried to try to deter having schoolchildren. But even beyond that, on the Monroe side of this development, there's only two two-bedrooms. So it's really not geared towards the type of unit that could have children. It's predominantly one-bedrooms and studios. So we think it will have minimal impact. His report, I think for the Monroe side, said there would be three schoolchildren possible, but again, it's, it's only two two-bedroom dwelling units. So we really do not think we are going to have much of an impact on the school system. And in his whole analysis, it showed that this project would be, you know, a net positive as far as revenue for the town. He is not on, if the Commission wanted to wait for him, I mean, could wait till...
No, we're good.
Hearing where?
Paul, let's wait till we see what they say.
Yeah, okay.
You ready?
And I think that was, unless I'm missing some comments that were made at the last hearing, I think that addresses all the, all the comments that were made.
All right, well, let's ask the commissioners. We'll start on my right again with Commissioner Smirgley.
Just a little concern on the road construction for the sewer line. I'd just like your assurance that you guys are going to do it as quick as possible and, you know, while making a giant mess of...
Oh, absolutely. It's certainly in our best interest to make it, to make it as, as quick as possible. There's only a small portion that comes out into Main Street, but, but certainly, we will, we will try to do that as expeditiously as we can.
Thank you. No questions?
Yeah, my question was, I don't know if you hashed this out yet, but how, on the plan, like I said to you, we need to find out what schoolchildren are going to go to Monroe and which ones are going to Trumbull. I don't see that on the plan.
Sorry, Commissioner, we did look at that. We developed a plan. It's in...
It's in Peters.
It's in Peters.
Kind of what I was thinking. Do you have a Monroe address? You go to Monroe? Trumbull?
What's that one address? It's going to be...
It's not.
It's the same address.
It's all the color-coded, it's by your mailing address. Right, and so what we are going to do, it's also maybe if you have the color...
Could be the same, it's not the same address.
Can I share, please?
It's not the...
And let me get this.
You could have 1,000, 1,000 Main Street Monroe and 1,000 Main Street Trumbull. So if you live in...
You only have one address in Trumbull.
No, no, no. It's going to be two, two separate towns.
It's going to be two different addresses, service...
Two separate towns.
Well, what we're going to do is for the...
I live on Woodlawn. There's a Woodlawn in Trumbull.
No, I know that.
So those kids, so that kid goes to Trumbull, my kid goes to...
It is going to be two addresses?
Ah, it's two addresses.
Well...
One's Monroe, one's Trumbull.
You only have one address on this property, right?
There's multiple addresses right now, but the property is not one property yet. When we go to pull building permits of both towns, one of the things we'll be required to do is to merge all these pieces. So in Trumbull, there's three pieces, and in the Monroe side, there's two pieces. It's one, it's one piece, all right, it's one piece now, sorry. So, but when we go to pull building permit, we might have to file a lot merge plan that will make this one address, one property in the entire piece. And at that point, we would talk to the engineers in both towns to assign an address to it. What we've come up with is to label the units based on which town they are in. So Trumbull units will be T101, T201. Monroe units will be M101, M201. The plan that I handed out to you shows the division in the building. So everything in yellow is Monroe, everything in green is in Trumbull, and that carries on each floor. And that's how we'll...
So clear there's a delineation of units, regardless of the actual street address.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there, and the way we designed the building was so it would be clear which unit was in which town. You know, there's not, there's not, there's not a unit where, you know, Trumbull and Monroe is half and half.
If this is merged as one property, what's the address?
That would be to the determination of the engineers. The engineer set though, for each town would have to set that. That wouldn't be up to us.
For each town or for each, you said it's going to be one property?
Correct. So they would pick...
You have one property in two towns.
Because the, the, the line just splits the property, but it's, it's a merged property. From a legal perspective, like if you were ever to sell this property, you would sell one property, and it would have land partially in, okay, Trumbull, partially. And, and just so you know, there are, the, the pieces that make up this, there are some pieces that are in both towns already. It's not that there's, these pieces are completely separated from both towns, but we have this...
So how do they figure out the tax base on this?
What they will do is look at which portion of the building in the floor area is within Monroe and which one is in Trumbull. And again, we made that so it would be easy to delineate. I'm fully confident all towns will tax us.
All that are in the yellow will have the address. Let's just say it's 7182 Main Street Monroe. Can I read it?
Yes, yes. And it would be, yeah, it would, so, so if you were in, if you were in 7182 Main Street apartment M101 Monroe...
It would say Monroe in your address.
Would say, it would say...
That's how you know it's...
Also, and then it would be 7182 Main Street T101 Trumbull.
Address.
If you were in Trumbull.
Oh, well, this person's address is going to be Monroe, but it's going to be the same address. But it's not the same. It's going to say Monroe or Trumbull, correct?
Correct. Thanks.
The people that are in Monroe...
So if you're sending M101 a letter, it's right there. Monroe. Monroe. If you're sending T101 a letter, it's T101 Main Street Trumbull.
Right. So that we have this on a plan. This is a thing, you got it this on a plan somewhere?
Well, this, this is according to our floor plan, so...
So it's going to be attached to this plan somewhere?
Yeah, and then when, when the towns do set the actual address, then that would be added on. What they're determining is going to be the address. That would be on...
So you had Trumbull's, meaning how they, were they okay with this?
Yeah, they, yeah, they approved it in unanimous. We have this, there's a lot of properties, 5520 Park Avenue, the Yale Medical Center that's over by Sacred Heart, that's partially in Trumbull, partially in Bridgeport. Bridgeport taxes the garage that's there, the parking garage, because that's fully within Trump, uh, fully within Bridgeport. The, the main medical center is in Trumbull.
No, no, I understand it. That's a medical building. I'm talking about how schoolchildren go out of that. So I just wanted to make sure that it would be separate.
Sure.
Kids going to Monroe and what kids going to Trumbull.
Correct.
Reason behind that. If this is an industrial building, what makes a difference? I mean, but it...
Well, it still would make a difference.
Well, it was...
Not for kids, not for kids going to school.
Not for kids, but for tax purposes.
For tax purposes.
Leon doesn't want students, or he does.
No, I, I just want... Leon just wants to make sure Trumbull kids are not going to Monroe's kids.
And I'm sure that Trumbull's concerned about that, too.
No, I'm just...
Are we ready for the question?
I think we are, Chris.
If you're around me asking them about this. Yeah, and then on your plan, you said you're going to put the school bus somewhere. Is that on his plan somewhere?
School bus.
No, but I don't see it on his plan. Do you have a designated area for it?
The old plan or something?
He went over, it's right there.
It's right there on the street. This area right...
It's way older than one of those sheets.
It may not be on this sheet. It might be on the wrong sheet. But this area that you see right here, where it's like there's an indent right here, that's the school bus pickup, drop off.
Yeah, it's going to be crosshatched or something like that? Is it the crosswalk or...
Well, it'll be...
And the sidewalk?
It's on Main Street. It's going to be concrete, yeah, a wider concrete area. That's it.
Is that designated on his plan? What part is planned?
Which ones? There's like 10, there's like 10.
I have to, no. Let's do a shuffle up. For the, for the kids. We have that, uh, industrial waiting area, so it's...
What number is this sheet?
Uh, in sheet...
2.0.
Just about this case of Edward Stadium, it's associated with... The, 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 we, 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 we,
This is the new one. Pedestrian waiting area. No, it's not what we need, we need a school. That's just pedestrian waiting area. There's a, you don't have.
But that could be both for pedestrians and the school kids. I mean, you could amend it to say school and pedestrian waiting area.
No, you gotta have on the plan where you're gonna put that school bus.
The bus isn't gonna come out of the property.
Yeah, bus can't come out of the property.
No, I know, but off on Main Street, I wanna see where that's going to be.
Right here. It's gonna be on Main Street.
It's not on the plan.
That's where it's planned.
Mark pedestrian.
And that can, and that can technically change too, because doesn't this, the bus department determine? They could say we're not parking here.
DOT, is that right? The DOT?
The DOT would control the pedestrian waiting area.
What about a bus stop?
Well, the school would decide where they would, we, we had talked to them and they said that they would not go onto the, onto the private property and that they would drop off on the side of Main Street, both sides. We said that we would show, that we were going to indicate an area for it and they didn't seem to have an issue with that.
I just.
Yeah, I just want, I don't want to, well. Okay, so you, so I wanna make sure the school bus is off the road, right?
Oh, no, it's on the road. Oh, it's on, it's on Main Street. It doesn't come off.
Do that on now anyway.
And the, and the bus department could decide, once this is filled, we're not gonna stop here. They could say the kid, they could say the kid has to walk down the street. They try not to on 25, but they do that all over town.
From talking with the bus company, they, they have no qualms stopping Main Street and, and just right in that lane, pulling up the stop sign and letting the kids go on. I, I, I actually, the other day was on East Road in Westport in the morning, where it's four lane highway.
No, no, they stop in the middle.
The bus, they'll, they'll stop right in the middle of the road and they'll stop post road. So they're, they're gonna go up Main Street, heading northbound, and they're gonna stay right in the right lane and they're gonna pull out the stop and they'll get on, the kids will get on from that pedestrian waiting area.
So they're gonna pick up on that side of the road. They're not gonna be able to cross.
No, that, that's, that's what they assurance is, that they would, when they're picking up, they would be on that side and they would, they would have their routes go so that when they dropped off, it would, it would be on that same side. They'd never cross Main Street.
If you have a pull off too, it's gonna encourage people to pass the school bus.
Well, that was, that was, that's great point, Commissioner. So one of the, because there was talk about a lane where the bus would pull aside and one, DOT would control that, but two, there's, there's, there's two problems with it. The first is if they pull off, if they have not pulled the stop sign, it's going to encourage people because the lane is gonna basically open up for those people buying the school bus. Everybody who wants to get by the school bus is gonna try to speed right around the bus, which is something bus company does not want. The, the second problem is, once they have the kid on the bus, then the school bus has to merge. And there's this area where they pull in the stop sign.
They don't wanna do that.
That every car behind them is gonna try to basically block the bus from merging in, and that's just not.
No, they're better off.
They're better stopping in the middle of the road, getting them quickly from that pedestrian waiting area and moving on.
There are so much better stuff.
Okay, that's all I got. Is that Miami?
No, you and, I, I think I was the one who asked about the buses and the, and the, the package delivery spot and all that kinda stuff. So thank you for that. Didn't we, wasn't there something in the other corner? Didn't we talk about something in it?
The opposite corner, or maybe that was.
You mean, uh, for the right turn?
Yeah. Didn't we say something about that? Am I hallucinating?
The sidewalk gave it all the way.
Yes, they don't, they don't go all the way and then hopefully the death of this property owner develops, hopefully, like rights required, but they would have to put a sign. So then we would have a sign.
But right, but that one way was just a, it was a right turn only out of the property, correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's gonna be signed off and all that kinda stuff?
Yeah, and it's physically gonna push you right, so you can't, you know, try to pull a left out of here. You'll be impeded from doing that. But it allows, if this main drive out becomes blocked, it allows another avenue for those people who can use those turns to get out. It's like a relief valve essentially.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, just sounds like all of our concerns have been met and it's like a nice gateway project.
Thank you.
Alright, that's, I have enough questions. I'll go to the public at this point. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public here in person that would like to comment on the project, please raise your hand. So none, if there are any members of the public online that would like to comment on this project, please raise your hand. Or make yourselves known. Hearing none.
Hold on. Hold on.
We'll go back to the.
I heard a hold on.
Commissioners for one last chance at questioning the applicant. Stand, sir. Do you have on the map above for the truck?
Yes.
Where'd you widen that?
In the back.
Back, right hand corner.
Back corner.
I'm gonna back on.
Yeah, I could just tell him she.
You opened up the back corner.
Truck path is on.
There it is, right there.
2.2.
Yep.
And we widened the whole entire mirror by four feet so that the fire department could use their outrigger to run the trucks.
So even in each corner, they can make it through here?
Yes, yes. That's the largest truck that both departments have.
And you talked to both departments about that?
Yes, we did.
Obviously, an ambulance.
I wanted to make sure that was on. Any other questions from commissioners? Anything from the staff? Okay, to you, our attorney.
Can I just quickly run through the standards real quick, just to get it on the record? I'll be, I'll be quick. So regarding your standards for special exception permit use, regarding location and size of the use, this plan is completely performing to your regulations. And the intensity of the operators' traffic is submitted to traffic study that shows with tall posts and frequencies, that there'll be no significant impact from the no build conditions. Regarding the location, nature and height of buildings, again, it is completely performing to your regulations. We've been through your architectural review board and incorporated some of their suggestions. So we, we, we feel that the building proposed is appropriate. Regarding objectionable noise, fume, smoke, dust, vibration, this project doesn't propose anything like that. It is a mixed-use residential and commercial project. It really has, has nothing like that. Regarding safe sanitary sewage disposal, we are proposing the installation of a new sewer line to handle our waste. And we've received approvals from Bridgeport WPCA and Trumbull WPCA for that line. Regarding the parking areas, if they provide enough or adequate capacity, this, this parking area is compliant in both Trumbull and Monroe to your regulations. Mixed-use development lends itself very well to the sharing of parking areas between residential and commercial. Regarding comments and recommendations of town staff and consultants, I believe we've incorporated everything from town staff, not just one town, two towns. Regarding approvals from all other government agencies, we have received all those necessary approvals. Again, Bridgeport WPCA, Trumbull WPCA, Monroe inland wetlands, Trumbull inland wetlands, Trumbull planning and zoning, and then hopefully tonight, or hopefully future from Monroe planning and zoning. And that the proposed use will not require such additional public facilities or services to create such fiscal burdens. We submitted fiscal impact study that showed that actually this project will create revenue for the town, not take away. And for those reasons, we respectfully request you approve this application. And thank you again for all your time, or for, I think it's probably been the years, for this property, to really see this finally come to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Russell. On behalf, we will close this hearing. Next public hearing. This is a new public hearing. SCP-2023-02, File Number 1650A, 126 Main Street. And we have the witnesses.
In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 16th, 2023. And more soon thereafter, it will be a hybrid Zoom meeting. And if attendees located in Monroe Town Hall. SCP-2023-02, File Number 1650A, 126 Main Street. Special exception permit application for proposed renovation of existing building and site improvements for new gas station and convenience store located at 126 Main Street B-2 District. Accessory map, 012 Lot 013/00. Hock LLC applicant Rose Tizzo and company representative. But this was published twice in Voices, Wednesday, February 1st and February 2nd.
And exhibit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit Number 1, Application and Plan Set. Number 2, Health Department Comments. Number 3, Certified Mail Receipts. And number 4, Department of Transportation, District 3, Their Report, Aided February 15, 2023. That is all.
And for the applicant.
Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick, Attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Russo Arizio. With offices in Sasko Hill Road. I'm here tonight representing Hock LLC, application for special exception permit, permitting the renovation of the existing building on site for a new gas station and convenience store. The principal of Hock LLC, Sharaz Kudari, here with me tonight. And Mr. Kudari, several other service station applications, including one in Fairfield on Black Rock Turnpike, one in Fairfield on Brookline Parkway, one in Bridgeport, and another in Old Sago. Mr. Kudari is an experienced operator of this kind of facility. Property collection contains 0.96 acres, located in the business-to-business district. The gas station is a permitted use by a special exception approval in the B-2 zone. I should note there will be no auto repairs conducted on site to prevent the sale of gasoline in the convenience store. The commission may recall that this property is subject to a similar special exception application in the spring of 2022. That application was withdrawn after discussion with the Department of Staff. In order to permit the amendment to the application to address concerns expressed by the town and this commission. Application before the commission tonight was devised, particularly to permit the reorientation of interior traffic on site, changing the flow from north to south, from south to north, as well as the friction of turns. One-way right turn only, as well as the provision for widening the road to permit the provision of a left turn lane heading south on Route 25. I should note this application has received approval from the Inrelevancy Commission as well as the Architectural Review Board. Presentation tonight includes Steve Santa Cruz from the Architectural Engineering in front of Rose Tizzo, testimony from Termit Wild, the principal of KW Enterprise LLC of Maryland, and operating in outlining his traffic report. I will then conclude. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Steve Santa Cruz, Rose Tizzo, with us in Fairfield, outlining the proposed plan. Steve.
Thank you. My name is. Rose Tizzo is helping me get it at 35 right when I'm new in Fairfield, representing Hock LLC. And I'm gonna take us through the site plans, starting with the survey before you. As you can see, it's approximately a acre site, located on 125, just to the side of Duchess. The address is 126 Main Street. And this building was prior used as a automotive retail distributor, I believe.
This deal, the RVR?
And the proposal is to reuse the building and refurbish it to use as a gas station and convenience store. And the site plan, you see, the building program is going to extend to the same. This is the convenience store. It also has a full basement, which will be storage, second floor, which will also be storage space for the gas station. And a store. Period time spaces, which are going to be deferred. To the property. And additional parking also to the mirrors of the building. And it says, it says 125. This is the plan. We have a revised plan to use the southern driveway as the entrance. Right to the exit. Out of concerns for site circulation. Showing up a plan. Circulation. Southern driveway circulating to the site, exiting the northern driveway, which was also a concern last night. We prepared a drainage plan and utility plan. We are, we have received approval for a new septic system to the northern building. For providing stormwater control and subsurface stormwater storage areas. The rear of the building, which will outlet to level spreader. Grounds, which is for the year. As well as a system in front of the building, which will also discharge ultimately to the wetlands. The site is sloping from 25 towards the rear of the property in general and we're maintaining the grade as existing for the most part. We provided a motion control plan with silksack. And we also provided a notes and details plan and landscape plan for the site. I can go into more detail if you have any questions, but actually providing plant tables where we can. Providing lighting plan. And show zero lighting. We have our typical engineering detail sheets, the pettices, the woodwork, and also providing stormwater fall control with our level spreader and a punch pool. More details for the dumpster pad and included here is sidewalks. And here's our floor plans for this building. So we have basement level plan. And floor plan. Storage areas. And then this, this area is gonna be all retail use. Second floor is also gonna be storage, as I mentioned. We have our elevations. They also provided demolition floor plans for the building and demolition exterior elevations. As you can see, they're going to be improving the front of the building, so. It's gonna be a straight improvement from what's there right now. And I'll conclude my presentation. If there's any questions or comments, be happy to.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll go to the commissioners for questions at this time. Start on my right.
No questions at this time?
What's the front elevation garage door for if you're not doing repairs?
The front elevation, sorry, can you?
The garage door?
Oh, no, these, these are storefront, uh, doors.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then do you have the elevation of the pumps or no?
Uh, we don't at this time. I don't, I don't believe.
Do you know what gas station it's gonna be or no?
I can't say at this time. Ungrading.
And are there gonna be sidewalks? There already are sidewalks, right? Sidewalks in front of here?
There, there's no sidewalks currently in front of the site. The commission or the staff actually asked us to add a sidewalk across the street, which we initially agreed to do as part of this project, but as you know, the project across the street, 127 Main Street, is coming through with a significant carbon development. And the, working with the state, they, I believe they've asked the sidewalk to be a part of their project.
On your side, in front of.
Oh, on 127, across the street from us.
In front of your building, in front of where you're putting it, you have to have a sidewalk.
Yeah, they're showing a new six, new six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was getting, I'm.
We asked for a sidewalk across the street for that?
No.
That's for another project, you heard that.
Alright, thank you.
How's this truck gonna enter in here? Do you have a path to this truck?
Yeah, it's on SP-1.
No, you haven't, we need to create some kind of diagram, how you're gonna.
It's on, it's on SP-1. You can see it's. It's on S P one. You can see it's slightly shown on there, but it's a full tanker truck.
There it is.
Yeah.
Full picture, picture. It's very light, but yeah. Yeah, those are vehicles.
What size truck do you have to say?
Tanker, I think you said, right?
Tanker on here? What's the length of the truck? What size truck do you have?
I believe this is a W B fifty.
Doesn't have that out here.
Yes, see where the laser?
It's very light, Liam.
The truck, it just doesn't say the size of the truck, right?
It's happening there. I think that's the line. Traffic nightmare. This is a traffic nightmare.
If there's any clear vision, we can address that.
Just confused about this property. This is like a very. The truck's gonna cut into your islands?
The delivery is going to be from, yeah, deliveries will be when the service station is closed.
I don't think there are any.
Yeah, we can't prevent that from happening.
Stephen?
How are you gonna prevent that from happening?
We've got a letter to submit from the supplier that that's the only time they'll make deliveries to this side.
I understand, but that's with that supplier. You have to make sure that if this place is sold to somebody else, they sell it, get a different supplier. That truck will come at any time it wants to come. We're approving this plan that this is forever. If they sell it, it's not gonna prevent us from saying that that truck's not gonna come in the middle of the afternoon.
Happy to have the condition included as a condition of approval.
What are the hours operate? I'm sorry.
Seven AM, eleven PM.
Commissioner Ambrose is still half a floor up.
So.
Sorry.
He always interrupts me, so it's fine. Basically, if this truck comes in during the day, it's gonna go through Island Six. It's gonna come out to Island One. Is that true?
I think it's gonna miss Island One, but it looks like it's going to go over Island Six. That's correct.
It looks like it's gotta come out to Island One, because you got an island one coming out onto the road, so he can make the turn onto Main Street without going out. It looks like it's going to Island One.
It can maneuver around that.
No, my concern is if the truck comes in when pedestrians are there getting gas, it's going to go through the path. Of where you have the gas pumps on both sides.
So these don't match. What we're looking at here, you have Island One, you have a truck drawn on Island One, and it's not showing up there. You can come up if you want to see it.
This is on S P one?
That's the only way that that truck can get out of there, no? Going through Main Street, you have to make that cut through there.
Yeah, I think we're missing the point. The point is that there's not gonna be anyone at the gas.
No, I understand. I understand the point. The point I have is that we're approving the plan. Property gets sold and anybody could, any gas company, whatever, you can get it from whatever company you get it from. But any company say, listen, we're delivering at twelve o'clock in the afternoon. You know what I'm saying?
Add a note to the plan. I think that.
You've got a condition of approval, and that approval is recorded on the land records. It then becomes notice to every purchaser that that's a condition of this site, that you can't have deliveries except when the gas station is closed. I think that's about as much protection as we can give the commission, and I think it's valid.
So you're gonna have, he's gonna come in from, he's gonna come in from the going down south. Gonna go one way in?
Yes.
So how are we gonna prevent that too?
You're gonna, the way you have any one-way entrance exit along Route twenty-five, you've got signage. You've got the, particularly the exit will be pointed toward the north in an effort to dissuade people from.
The only way that he's gonna come off of twenty-five is he would have to come going down south in order, otherwise he'd have to cut into twenty-five if it comes the other way, right? He don't show that on his plan. Show that.
Turn everything as that.
So that basically six and come out with one. That's the way they have it.
I still, yeah.
You have the truck heading south on this map, correct?
Two, he had a north way.
There's both on what we're looking at.
But he's showing that when it comes in from the north, it's gonna go into six, because it can't make that turn there. It has to go out over six in order to get into there. That's what that's set up. It looks like that's what it is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least a half, a quarter of the truck or whatever is gonna.
I mean, it's a tight area there to get in and out of a truck. That's what our concern was last time, and that's what our concern is this time, is that. Basically, you know, we're worried about the safety of people that are coming in there or people that are coming in and out. You're saying, I understand what you're saying, that I don't know if we can do it as a requirement, but who's gonna police that? Are we gonna be able to do that as a requirement?
You can impose that on the sheet, and you know, the zoning officer will do his or her best to enforce it.
But there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
I just don't want it to be an unsafe condition. And I understand what you're saying, and I understand about being at night, deliveries at night. I got all that. The problem I have with it is that this stands with the site. If they sell it or sell it to somebody else, it turns into a whole different site. I understand what they are in your agreement. And thing is, is that for us to do that, they don't even have to come back in here for an approval, right? If they sell it and it stays the same?
Normally they don't unless you are.
Something on the plane.
Well, unless, that's right. Or if you want to be creative in your approval.
Okay, Commissioner, my name.
So the gas deliveries are gonna be coming around in the midnight-ish area, correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
This was from a year ago.
That's when we were here. The letter still stands.
From a year ago? Peter's still the president?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And he is still Mr. Pagarri's supplier.
So a year ago, he was gonna make deliveries from between twelve and four. He still stands by that today?
Yeah, please. They take a condition of approval, so it's.
Please just answer my question.
Yes.
Thank you. What about, you have a convenience store, correct?
Yes.
Convenience store deliveries come when?
They come at all different times.
All different times during the day.
You show that route path?
Oh, come on, man, really? Go ahead, finish it up. So they come all times of the day. What kind of vehicles do they come in? If you're gonna answer questions, can you come up, please? Now I'm getting frustrated.
Yes, my name is Shiraz Choudhury. I'm from KW LLC. So Canadian store delivery comes in, you know, at all different times, but they're in much smaller trucks.
Such as?
Um, I'd say three. Yeah, I would say so.
Box truck?
Yeah, just a regular box truck.
No issues, certainly.
My concern is you have a traffic light not far from there. And a four-way intersection not far from there. And if you're gonna have box trucks coming in and taking a left into the property, and, and you're gonna, the way people drive. They're gonna try to press up onto that box truck, and if you have traffic coming this way, you're. It's gonna be a traffic nightmare in my, in my perspective. Have we done a traffic study with?
We should introduce our traffic engineer.
Do you have any other questions, or do you want to go to the traffic?
We go with the traffic right now, because that's where my mind is.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Kermit Ho, KWH Enterprise LLC, with the address of two seven seven Reservoir Avenue, Unit one one oh one, Maryland, Connecticut. Since I was here last time, you know, the major change to affect the traffic operation is we prohibited a left turn exit from the driveway. So that's the main thing that caused the delays, because, you know, we have two-way busy traffic, especially during peak hours. And that's a no good solution to keep that left turn exit. So with the left turn exit prohibited and entry and exit separated, that's a much better operation. Granted, the commissioner's question, what's gonna be, you know, when you have a box truck making to, to make a left turn into the. The entry, the southern entry driveway, sort of tied up the traffic, right, so stop run traffic, and then you have no run traffic coming. Actually, I did analyze the level service of the done movement in the last table, level services. You know, there will be enough gaps in the opposing traffic stream for the box truck, for the box truck to make a movement. Obviously, box truck, you know, move more slower than typical passenger cars, but in terms of traffic capacity, you know. It will be able to find a gap. It's not like it's gonna tap a traffic for two, three minutes. That's not going to happen, even during peak hours. And there's an earlier question about how to enforce, how to sort of force people to make the, only using the entry-only driveway as opposed to, you know. Probably delivery drivers are not familiar with the area. We can add two additional do not enter sign at the exit at the northern driveway. So it will be clear, you know, which driveway to use, whether you come from the north or come from the south. While I have the chance, just the, just overall, you know, there's no issue in terms of delays during peak hour for trucks. For all vehicles to make a right turn out of the northern driveway. The question is, you know, what if people want to go south, you know? There are two, there are several opportunities. We do have a Old Newtown Road right down the street. So more way probably is just use the Old Newtown Road, make a right turn on Old Newtown Road, and make a left turn on the Purdy Hill Road, then use that signal. Alternatively, you can use the.
Hold on, one, two, what?
Yes, I.
There's Old Newtown Road, but Purdy Hill Roads are right.
No, you take a left, take it back.
It's triangles. If you think about Old Newtown Road and Purdy Hill Road and Main Street, they are triangles, two, three sides of the triangle. If you make a right turn on Old Newtown Road, then then you can make a left turn on the Purdy Hill Road to the, to the traffic light. So that's why.
Oh, I see.
You go right next to that.
Yes, actually, I should also have a driveway onto Old Newtown Road.
Yeah, I forget about that a little. Yeah, it's like a little extra round bit of corner. Yeah.
I think more people probably would do, you know, use the other commercial driveway on the west side of a Main Street. Whether it's Shell gas station or Dunkin' Donuts, you can make a left turn into the outside, then turn around, you know, make a right turn. So that's also the way to do it, but you know, people will figure out a way to do it.
Yeah, but that's the problem.
I think a lot of them are gonna use the gas station across the street.
I think so too. I, oh my God, this is a traffic nightmare.
I'm glad you're more, I'm glad you're more optimistic than I am. Yeah, the other thing, Commissioner, is that, you know, this is not a unique situation for us. There are many other developments, commercial developments, residential development, including the, you know, one twenty-seven residential development, you know. Not everyone has a traffic signal at that time. That's just a reality. So we tried to come up with some solution that works for us, works for the town, you know, works for the safety of the users and drivers.
Sure, but if you're coming southbound, right, and you pull in, you pull in and take a left, then you want them to take a right, a right, loop back around, and then come right back around south again? I don't know. Wouldn't you just stop at the Shell station and just keep going down?
This is more for people going north.
This is more a northbound thing.
People want to go back, you know. If they stop at a gas station, keep going north, we have no issue whatsoever.
Well, of course, of course. I have so many jokes for that one. Keep quiet. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other traffic questions?
No, I don't have any more questions.
Traffic, traffic.
I, obviously, the customer will be driven based upon what time of day it is and which direction people are going. People that don't want to cross over Shell and, and as far as the, you know, the solution that came up with is turning down the Old Newtown Road, making a left turn on Purdy Hill. During peak hours, that's all backed up. It's a, it's a solution, I understand, but that is backed up. People are waiting at that light. Most of the people are trying to get into back roads to go down county. That way and get over to fifty-nine and come down, so that is already a little bit congested there. It's a good solution off-peak, but you don't need that solution in twenty-three.
Right, you know, I think the main thing, at least I spent six hours there, you know, a year ago. The main queue is on Route twenty-five, not so much on Purdy Hill Road or Jet Road. So I don't see the queue on Purdy Hill Road extend that much. You cannot turn out of the.
Well, there's, what would you say, three cars and you can't turn on the Purdy Hill? If they're waiting at the light, maybe three or four cars and you can't turn on the Purdy Hill Road?
I don't have the exact distance like between the, the length of the Purdy Hill Road between Route twenty-five and Old Newtown Road. That's quite a distance. I would say definitely more than two or three cars, if you think about it, yeah. It's almost a triangle.
You know, make no bones about it. It's a tough lot to put this together on. You guys have gotten pretty creative with this, with these drawings. I'm a little concerned with the garbage also. It looks like you have between twenty and twenty-four feet for a garbage truck to kind of pick up the garbage and move around.
Sure.
Is, is planning on bringing a smaller vehicle in to deal with that or?
Yeah, we can get creative with that as well, Alan, but you know, he's gonna have to, he might have to back out and do a kind of a turn.
If cars are parked, you know, on the right and the left, and it depends on how big the vehicles are and how they're parked, it may be really tricky to get the garbage out of there.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for the best possible place for it.
Understood, understood. In the back is obviously the best. So from what I'm seeing here, so the customers are gonna enter on the northern section of the building, correct?
All right, I'm sorry. On the, on the southern, southern, on the southern entrance is the entrance.
I'm talking about into the convenience store.
Oh, okay, into the convenience store at the front, yeah. The west, western side.
Okay.
Yep.
And I know this building pretty well. There's a lot of, a lot of room in there. It's gonna be a very large convenience store, and you're gonna have a lot of, a lot of storage.
Yep.
Both below and up top. Is that storage gonna be for rent?
Um, not very late. No.
I mean, that is way more storage than a convenience store needs.
Yeah, right now it's gonna.
I don't know, but I'm just saying it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of space there.
I can't speak.
Yes, you know, we have other stores, so it'd be good for us to store most of our products there and move it to the.
Like a central location, more or less?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in front of the parking spots here that are about in the building, do you have, do you have bollards in place here?
It's a six-foot sidewalk in front of the building and. Um. We don't currently have bollards shown. Um, that's something that. In one, so we could.
I, for one, don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta put those on the plan.
Um. And as far as the fuel deliveries, I don't think it's good for anybody to be receiving fuel deliveries during the day, just like any other cask. I know it's gonna be tight and you guys are gonna end up having to use areas that you, you may not traditionally use in other gas stations. But I don't think there's a real big, uh, desire for any of these drivers to be pulling in there during the day or especially during rush hours. Um, so I think you can probably manage that and that, and that'll take care of itself because it'd be a disaster trying to get in and out of there with a fuel truck. Um. That's all I have.
On the basement elevation. Uh, you have garage doors in the rear.
Correct. I'm sorry, cuz this. That's the delivery for storage. Now, so we're just maintaining the existing rear.
You put to the plan. First page. Just wanna say something on, uh, what is it, plan, page one, survey.
Uh, the survey, yeah.
Rear of the survey, it, um, there's an area that was filled, wetlands that.
Yeah, there, there's wetlands to the rear of the property, um.
Wetlands approval, does that have you removing the fill?
No, we're, we're basically not, um, filling or, um, doing any earthwork in that area.
It's this pavement there that's gonna be removed?
Um. Just go. On, 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 on the plan in front of you, um, we're, we're, we're not, uh, moving. There's gonna be no fill on.
It was a violation. It's existing paved area to be removed on S P one.
Yeah, correct. So we're, we're making that, um, you know, we're improving that area.
That was part of the.
That was part of the wetlands, uh, approval.
Okay, so you are gonna be removing pavement back there.
Yes.
And I think there was also fill in there that, that would be removed also, I, I imagine.
Wasn't there a violation on this property?
Yep.
This man taking care of that violation?
Yes.
The wetlands?
Standing, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, that was resolved with the wetlands.
Is?
Yep.
What was the conditions on that?
Oh, to, uh, like the plan show, to remove the pavement area and the debris associated in that area. There was filling that took place. That was a violation.
Did you get this letter from D O T?
Wait a minute, I'm still going back, I'm sorry. I thought you lost. No. All right, so I'm just concerned that you're very close to the Paquonic River here. Um, you're, you're going to repave the two-minute pavement in the back?
Yeah, that's existing, uh, pavement. We're not going any further towards the wetlands and, you know, we need to get done to walk to. Where's that showing in this?
Repave that area.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question.
Wait a minute.
You got it done, yeah.
I said, when you get a chance.
Okay, Mike, go ahead, move along.
I just said, when you get a chance. You received a letter from the D O T that you have to address, so we're not gonna close the, uh, hearing tonight, correct?
Because of the D O T comments? Um, if that's, uh, you know, I, I think we talked about. Honestly, maybe we had a condition, those conditions of approval, but. You know, we're, we're working with the D O T currently. Uh, we didn't think that those were very significant comments and. You know, a lot of the time we go to the D O T after we already have all the town approvals. So I don't think that should lay on the decision of the question.
So that's between you and them, basically?
Correct.
They wouldn't let you do anything until you satisfy their requirements?
Yeah.
All right, well, that's good. Then, um, I think that was all of my questions. Um. Commissioners, any other questions before we go to the public?
Yeah, hold on. This D O T, they may have you to modify some stuff on this plan.
Uh, yeah, they're minor.
So this, no, I understand that, but this plan's gonna change. So I believe that, I don't, for your benefit, I don't believe you don't wanna close this. Because then you, we don't have to deny it. We, we don't have a set plan from D O T, right?
No, you, you can make that a condition of approval.
But what if they changed the plan?
They gotta come back to you.
The driveway must be. They must have already saw plans.
No, they did, and, and they asked them to make some changes.
Right, but that's not on the plan.
You are right. Sometimes the town makes a condition, D O T.
They may want them to.
Or something, maybe. They'd have to come, you'd have to come back and modify the plans.
So we're gonna close this under, without?
We can close it.
Can close it.
We can?
Yes.
Okay.
And if there's any drastic changes, they gotta come back and present it back to the commission.
Okay, Commissioner May, yeah, I think you had another question.
I did. Um, so you said you're an independent, independent, correct? But you're not gonna put any signage at all on this?
There will be a price sign, you know, a gas price sign.
That's it? Nothing on the building?
Uh, you know, it'd be a small food mark sign or something like that.
Cuz it's not notated on the plan, that's all? There's no signs, just?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't know what the. That'd be just a regular two-point sign.
And then you're just gonna have your sign out in the street with the prices and then?
Yes. Yeah.
Right, I don't know if we need to, you need to see that on the plan? He's putting a sign on the, on the building. You don't have to have that.
No, you, uh, the, the monument sign. Or any type of sign that you wanted to note it on the site plan.
Right, right. He's having, he's putting a monument sign, he said, with the gas prices. And then he's also putting a sign on the building that says food mark or something. But he doesn't have any of that on the plan right now, right? That's why I just said. No, I'm just saying to Rick, so.
Yeah.
Have to be put on the plan.
That would have to be put on the plan, yes.
That's a condition of approval.
We don't even know what it's gonna look like.
Be happy to make the sign the subject of a separate application to this commission.
Well, we also worried about the, the, the line of sight as well. It's, it's tricky right there. Cars coming over the hill and, and the congestion.
Understood.
Line of sight is, is big.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right.
The next meeting is March second.
Okay, we're gonna go to the public now. Anybody here in person from the public that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Make yourself known. Seeing none. Any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand or make yourself otherwise known. Seeing none. We'll go back to the commissioners for one last. Chance. Any question from the commissioners?
So there's no, I mean, you guys really seem like you wanna close this tonight. Even though it looks like, you know, D O T could come back with changes and then you're gonna have to resubmit and start over. We need some sort of sign. It's not like, there's no sign on the plan. Are you opposed to just us keeping this open till next meeting, just for you guys to come back with some signs drawn on the plan and maybe see if D O T responds by then?
Commissioner, that might be a positive idea.
And, uh, can I suggest to?
I don't wanna rush a vote.
Man of the people.
Can I suggest that you, uh, demarcate a higher line on the, uh, the delivery truck?
Sure.
It's hard for the commission to read that.
Yep.
Either do a separate sheet.
Yeah.
Cuz that's, that's an important component.
Yeah.
You wanna see the exact location. We did it for Dunkin' Donuts, remember, you can send. It was a separate sheet.
They know our concerns now and maybe just come back with those answers.
Rick, just a question for you. Do we have the, the engineer, do, do we have him, any comments on this?
Uh, no, he, uh, he, he has reviewed it and, uh.
And he's.
Storm drainage. And he's satisfied.
No, we're talking about the truck path, the garbage truck. Did he look at all that stuff?
Yes. That's the consultant, right? Joe.
Yeah, consultant Joe, but Rob had concerns about where he picks it up and backs into those parking spaces.
Yeah, I'm gonna convey that to, we have more time.
Okay.
And we'll continue the hearing until, until our next meeting, March second.
March second.
Okay, well, then, continue to the March second. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next public hearing is, um, R A A twenty twenty-three dash oh one, file number one, oh two four E, one twenty-seven Main Street. This is, um.
Yeah, I got it.
A new hearing.
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February sixteenth. At seven P M or soon thereafter via hybrid meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. R A A twenty twenty-three dash zero one, filed one zero two four E, one twenty-seven Main Street, petitioned by Pondview LLC. Regulation amendment petition, application for a proposed revision of special development district number one, S D D one. Within the Main Street Design District Overlay for the property located at one twenty-seven Main Street, Pondview LLC. Owner, Solely Engineering LLC representative. Notice was published, published and voiced twice, February first and February eighth.
Thank you, Commissioner May. And, and Rick, you have the exhibits.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, uh, application plans, that is all.
Okay, and for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solley.
You've already scared Leon away.
Hey, if you go really quick.
That didn't take long. Uh, for the record, my name is Kevin Solley. I'm a life process engineer in, uh, state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Office is located right here in the, the five zero street. Um, so we're here tonight, so, uh. Can you do share screen?
Oh, yeah, right here.
Perfect, thank you. So this first, uh, some housekeeping items. I wanted to submit three cards, but it's a notice. And, um, we're also submitting this evening a, um. A minor revision to the proposed regulation amendment, which, but we're making tweaks to it as we speak because we learned some information very recently, which I'll throw out through the department station. Um, but just to, to familiarize the commission with everything, um, so we're here to, to proposing a, a, a modest modification to the special development district number one. Which was approved, uh, last year for the element of one twenty-seven Main Street in Monroe, the, the Pondview Development. So just to orient everyone. Um, to orient everyone, so one twenty-seven Main Street is located on the southern end of, uh, Route twenty-five, one twenty-five, Road South. Um, Pondview, one twenty-seven Main Street, parks on twenty acres. Across the street from Duchess and actually is a prior application that the commission was just considering. Uh, last year and through extensive, uh, you know, discussion and thoughtful planning by the commission, we did, um, create the special development district. If you guys remember, it was a, um, extensive process. We created the Main Street Design District. Um, we then received a zone change for the property for the, uh, for M D D or Special Development District. Um, during that process, we, uh, uh. Through thoughtful discussion with the commission, there was some, uh, kind of conditions created where we wanted to make sure that the buildings we were proposing had elevators. Um, and after that approval, we came back before this commission informally because we wanted to, uh. Go over some potential changes that would be required to accommodate the requests for elevators. Um, if you were, if you recall, the previous approval had a three-story walk-up product with all stairs. And incorporating elevators would creates a, uh, a change to the building design to accommodate the elevator, the corridors. Um, it, it's a pretty considerable change to the buildings themselves. It's actually a much, um, uh, I, I think it's a considerable improvement, um, to the plan. It creates a much nicer atmosphere from a building standpoint. Um, but in order to effectuate that change, we had to come in with this regulation and then to modify, formally modify that. Regulation to allow for the, um. Uh, to allow for the revised, uh, building configuration. Because if you recall, what we talked about was the previous approval proposed a total of, uh, eight, um, three-story walk-up buildings. With, um, varying units and the proposed change will result in seven residential structures rather than eight. Um, so we need to propose to modify the regulation to accommodate the change in building, uh, height. Because the S D D was approved, it was very specific with the numbers of buildings, the number of units, um, and actually the building height. So, um, what I have for the commission, which I will submit some now, here's six copies. But we, in, in going through our more detailed design, so back to the flow chart again, we already had the design district approved. We already had the special development district approved. We are now seeking a slight modification to that. Um, and once that's enacted, then have to go through wetlands approval, which we're actually currently ongoing. Our application is into the wetlands commission for the formal site plan. And, um, we actually have the formal site application or, excuse me, special, special exception permit application for the formal design. Submitted to this commission and we actually have a, a public hearing at the next meeting on March second. So just from a timing standpoint, we wanted to, uh, modify the language in kind of separate applications, which is why we're here. And we'll see you for the formal special exception permit in two weeks. Now, what I dropped off, what we're dropping off this evening is, as we progress through the detailed design and incorporated the changes from a building design standpoint. Elevator, we, we, we need a slight increase to the building. Um, from what was previously approved as part of the, as part of the special development district. So that wasn't in the language that was previously submitted, but we, we did add that. So we, we are. From forty, from forty-two feet in height to forty-five feet in height. And that's to accommodate the, um, elevator shaft and it's a change in building design, which I'm gonna go through in a little bit detail here. So, so before you, here, this is the proposed master plan, which again, occupies, um, access to the site will be off of Route twenty-five. Come up to a very large, uh, very attractive clubhouse with a, a roundabout of the traffic flow. Um, a total of seven residential structures, each, um.
Eight units.
Twenty-eight units. Um, we also have included, uh, some, uh, covered garage spaces, some garages, which are located within the parking lot. And then a small maintenance building, intermail building. For residents of the post. Um, included in our submission as part of the S D D requirements, we have our creating a drainage plan, um, which will be viewed in much more detail during the special exception permit process. Um, we have been able to accommodate, um, you know, large above-ground retention basins for lower quality measures. We have some lower ground tension as well, although we have to provide something that meets the requirements of the lower quality. Two thousand four more quality mail. We also had our schematic, uh, septic unit utility plan, which is consistent with what was previously approved. Again, just a modification from eight residential structures down to seven. And it also included a comprehensive landscape plan. Um, and a lot of this is gonna be reviewed in much more detail during the special exception permit process, which will be, uh, next, the next hearing. Um. We included the architectural elevations for both structures. Um, you can see by incorporating the elevator for the buildings, it does require a little bit of a larger roof. The previous proposal had more of a flat roof design for the three-story walk-up buildings. The elevator, we have a little bit more, we have a, a steeper roof pitch and, uh. Um, to allow for that elevator shaft itself. So then again, that does the required height from forty, forty-five feet. As defined to the, the, uh, main of the roof line. Um, and then these are the proposed elevations for the clubhouse. Uh, this is the front entrance on the lower elevation. So if you come into that, um, large landscaped island, it's a really nice and inviting structure. Um, this is, this elevation actually faces the pool. Um, and again, there's, there's a, this is a highly amenitized, um, project with, uh, some really nice features. Some really nice features. Using the elevations from the side for the clubhouse. Thank you, Chris. So one of the things we wanted to show you is kind of the slight modification from a, from a perspective standpoint, actually. So this was the elevation from the previous, previously approved plan, or a section from the previously approved plan. You can see these buildings were much flatter roofs. So this had a height of 42 feet. With the change for the new building design, just because it does have that ridge, the max height from a building elevation standpoint is 45 feet. So that's, that's slight modification. But again, you know, I think this, this section, it tells a very good story that when you look at the, you know, surrounding property lines, there's a much higher elevation, as the commission's aware of this, which could say, you know, a large cut or a taping wall and a rock face down here. And that building is kind of tucked in to not, you know, adversely impact any of the residents or surrounding neighbors. Additionally, with this plan and this revision, you're also able to increase the separation of these structures from that rotating wall that surrounds the property. Again, just some more, including the last presentation, but we did, we did include some, some pictures of some other projects from the developer, which kind of just depict some of the, you know, the really cool features and amenities that they incorporate into their developments. You know, they have charting, et cetera. This is a product similar to what we're proposing. They're highly, highly amenitized. The four plans, again, we have them, but you can kind of see here where the, where the elevator shaft works and the hallways and the corridors. Again, it's a different, it's a different style of building now that we've incorporated the elevator to it. Then we have four plans for the clubhouse. You know, and you can kind of see, when you come in, there, you know, private dining room, there's almost like a decent office, some other offices. They have a cinema and a theater room, a package room, a game room with billiards, a golf simulator, a large seating area, co-working space, fitness center. You know, really, really highly amenitized development. So just to go through the actual changes we're proposing to the language, which is again, why we're here. So we, from a administrative standpoint, we updated the layout with this building configuration, so 96 units versus 188 units. And these are proposed to be developed over seven buildings instead of eight. So we've just made those minor changes here. For accessory uses, we've actually updated the, some of the amenities because we have more specificity now. So we're not going to do a bocce court, but we are putting in a putting greens and lawn games.
Big bocce, I mean, you took out bocce for putting?
I, you know, I think they're trying to be responsive to the current tenant demands are.
I can't bring my father there. It's crazy.
We also added garages because we do want to create, again, some of those covered garage spaces within the parking lot. We did modify the building height. This was actually based on an incorrect calculation. We had initially shown 50, 80 feet, but we marked up with red pen. It's 45 feet, which is the elevation to that median roof height. But we made some other tweaks just from a development plan standpoint because obviously, we do have more updated plans now, and which are coming before the commission. And then just a slight change from the description standpoint based on the updated drawings. You know, again, so our proposed modifications to the development district are really minor, and it's to be responsive to the commission's request to incorporate elevators into the buildings. So again, we reduced the building count from eight buildings to seven buildings. And we have a slight change to the building height from 42 feet to 45 feet. With that, you know, that's, that's the, those are the changes associated with this application. And again, we have our formal special exception permit application, which is in with this commission. We'll be here before you at the next meeting on March 2nd to give your more formal presentation on the overall project. We are, we are, we are in Wetlands right now. We expect to close Wetlands at their meeting in March, on March 8th. So we expect the meeting on the 2nd. We'll stay open until the subsequent meeting, which we have Wetlands approved. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solley.
Questions for the commissioners?
Yeah, the garages you're putting amid, are they just roofs or are they fully enclosed?
Fully enclosed.
And do they belong to specific units?
They will be, yeah. I think generally, they like to have that as an additional amenity for renters that they wanted to pay to have a garage space and something else they can offer to residents.
Thank you.
So for the parking, they're going to be assigned spots? And then you're going to have like guest spots like you do in Shelton, I assume?
You know, I think, I'm not sure if they intend to assign specific spaces to specific units. I think generally, what they try to do is make sure that they have sufficient parking across the overall site to accommodate everybody. But I think garage spaces would be more...
Because I will, so I went to the one in Shelton recently, the Mark in Shelton, and they, it is numbered. And all the guest spots were blocked off with cones, I assume, for snow removal. So I just want to make sure we don't run into that problem here because it was kind of a pain to have to park across, which would have...
Yeah, we take it for granted. That's a, that's a...
I'm more shocked, though.
That's something we can address as part of the special exception process, for sure.
Just, you know, keep that in mind, that at least the one in Shelton, I think is a little underparked for guests.
That one doesn't have as much space, right?
No, that, I don't know. I'm not sure how many spots they have.
I mean, just...
It's nice, it's a nice, you know, it's a nice spot, but the parking is definitely a problem there, so.
Commissioner Ambrosi, why do we remove one of the buildings?
Well, so the commission wanted us to ensure we were providing elevators into the units. So in order to, there's a different architectural building design between a walk-up product and a elevator building. Generally speaking, you know, in the absence of maybe senior housing, very rarely is a three-story building actually elevator or doesn't have an elevator. So what we were able to do here is use a similar footprint for an elevator building that was, that was built in other, other communities. Basically, kind of take off that fourth floor, make it a three-story building. But because the building design is different to accommodate the elevator, it changed the unit counts. So these buildings have 24 or 28 units in each building. And because there's a couple more units in the buildings themselves, we can eliminate an entire structure. So we went from eight 24-unit buildings to seven 28-unit buildings.
Yeah, but you're increasing your height by how much?
Three feet. From 42 to 40, 42 to 45. And that height increase is to accommodate the elevator shaft.
All right, so what about, as I watched the in-lit Wetlands meeting, there was a lot of people that was concerned about the height of the buildings, the neighbors. Are these neighbors going to see those roofs?
Can you go to the profile?
Sure. So one of the things, to touch on the elevation first, you know, that, that, that peak height is really only along, kind of only in the center of the building itself. The architectural design was to step that height down on the side. So, so that kind of helps alleviate the overall massing of the building. When you look at the section, you know, even with this section, you can see the building and it's kind of faint and a little more, probably try to get some of these rendered for the next meeting. But, you know, from a behind-the-building standpoint, based on the cut, you wouldn't expect this to have real visual impact on, on the neighbors with the slightly higher ridge line of the building.
So the highest point the neighbors is, is what, over there?
Back here.
Yeah.
I mean, existing grade is higher than even the, the top of the ridge. And again, from a landscaping standpoint, we've incorporated both screen fencing and landscaping, you know, along...
Is that on your other plan?
It is, our landscape plan. So you can see we have landscaping additionally along the slope and along the eastern side of the development with a, with a screen fence as well to further, you know, create privacy and reduce any kind of visual impact on...
Those garages weren't there before either, so you just added those on, right?
We also did, yeah. It's also part of what we were proposing as part of this modification, incorporate some covered garages in the parking lot.
All right, so basically, you're saying that it was more productive to put less building go down from eight to seven? Or is that to cover, take care of the garages? Because it looks like that's what it was.
No, I was, that was, that was really, the impetus for the change was the elevators. And that was obviously response to, in response to the...
And our ladder truck is high enough to reach to the top?
Yeah, it's like, it's like an 80-foot ladder.
And so does it differ from requirement for fire suppression system if you have four floors?
We have three floors. We don't have four floors. We're still a three-story building. And the fire suppression requirements are going to be the same.
Oh, you're just decreasing the roof height. You're only going to three stories?
It's still three stories. Yep. It's just, it's, instead of being a flat roof, it has a...
Went from 42 feet to 45 feet. So they only, they only went up three feet. Where I was in my Wetlands, we were talking about being four stories, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's only three stories. I think there was some, you know, some...
That's what I was, I didn't look at your other planes here, but...
It's just because most people...
It's only three, 10 feet per story, right?
It's still only three stories.
Because I thought that it would increase the height a lot higher than that. If it's four stories, it definitely would.
Yeah, I know, it's only, it's, we're still looking at three stories.
Three stories, okay.
I have no questions. So with the seven buildings, 28 units each, how does this change the bedroom configuration from the old plan? Are these all identical, these units?
It still keeps the same percentages, yeah, as was previously contemplated.
So how many bedrooms are in each unit?
You know, individual buildings? We can pull that up.
You're giving 20 to affordable housing? You're giving 20 to affordable housing?
10% of the units, according to...
18.6%?
Yeah.
Picking up one more.
20?
Yes.
How much longer do they have over there, anyway, Kevin? Hey, Shob.
They expect to be done with all the large excavation, hopefully by June, not before.
They've been blessed with this weather in February.
I think the, I think the one snowstorm we've had has certainly helped keep that pace. So they've made great progress.
70 degrees today, February? How much more material do they have to take out of there?
About 70,000 cubic yards, approximately.
It's noticeably different.
Yeah. I think, you know, there's been, you know, from a, just from an operations standpoint, they, they kind of maintained, you know, a larger novel material here. And that's basically the last to go. And as they, once that does, you'll, you'll get a little bit of a different view shot. But again, that should be completed within the next two to three months.
Awesome. Like I said, this weather in February has been a huge help.
Did you have any other questions while they're looking?
And Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I just want to make a comment.
Do you want to make a comment now or wait?
As the commission is aware, this is the first rezoning that we did under the Main Street Design District. This is STD Number 1. We are going to be preparing separate zoning manual for this. It'll be both available for hard copy and also on the webpage. My page has the zoning regs, subdivision regs, and then you'll have the special design district regs. This is a zoning regulation specifically for 127 Main Street.
We don't have to amend our regulations on the height size, only on this application?
No, on this document. This document's got to be amended to reflect the changes.
No, what I'm saying, we're not going to amend our regulations on the height of the building.
Not townwide, no. Not the underlying zone or townwide. This is specific to STD Number 1, 127 Main Street. I just wanted to share the logistics part of it because it'll be posted in the webpage. And we are picking up one additional affordable housing, as Una indicated, 19th, 20th. So 45 total bedrooms.
One left. Okay. I have no further questions. So we'll go to the public. Any members of public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Are there any members of the public online that have questions or comments for this application? If there are, please raise your hand. Or make yourself otherwise known. Saying none, do the commissioners have any further questions? If not, back to Mr. Solley.
So, so again, you know, thank you, Commissioner McQuaid, for hearing us this evening. Again, we're just looking at proposing some minor modifications to the language of the Special Development District previously approved for this location. We changed the building counts from eight to seven in response to the commission request to incorporate elevators in each of the building. We updated the STD, the additional amenities being proposed. And we made a slight modification of the building height to accommodate for the slightly taller pitched roof for the elevator shaft. And that summarizes the changes. Again, we'll be back before this commission with a formal special exception permit application at the next meeting. We look forward to continuing the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Solley. You'll hereby close this hearing. Includes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda is deliberations and determinations. We have one that is set, we have set right on, that's SEP 2022-08. Files 1648A.
I want to draft it. I have to tickle, do we take two minutes?
All right, so before we go into deliberations, we will take a five-minute recess. General meeting back in session. We are at deliberations and determinations. First application we will deliberate is SEP 2022-02, File 1648A. That is 46745 Pepper Street. We all talked about this briefly, directed Rick to, to draft a approval with some of the conditions that we had asked for.
Totally, and deliberating on it. We deliberating on it?
We're deliberating, writing on it now.
All right, so the, the rules are already in, I mean, conditions are already in here, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to summarize, because this is a large document.
There are the...
The three components are the three major components of the conditions. Are the noise...
Talking about Pepper Street, right?
Yeah. It's just the processing facility. Noise monitoring protocol and agreement. This is going to be required for the duration of this facility. Not during construction and not the first quarter. It's for the duration. Noise monitoring protocol and agreement. As stated at the public hearing, it's enclosed a hundred percent. Materials are to suppress it. The commission goes, we need to have a protocol and agreement to make sure it does not exceed the decibels that are permitted. Second one is the dust control measures. As you know, a lot of earth materials coming in. Both initially to the site to be dumped and then brought in to the processing facility. So there, there could be conceivable, conceivably a lot of airborne. That dust control measure, once again, twenty-four seven and has to be properly maintained. Also, as the commission indicated, you're going to have floor drains that's got to be picked up, swept, and, uh, and, uh, removed. The other is the, uh, operation as a whole. As the commission was made aware, materials are being brought in. They're being stockpiled. The Illand Wetlands Commission, that first major stockpile area. After that wall, you got the wetlands area. That is a well-enforced retaining wall slash designated fencing area. Because you've got heavy equipment pushing this material. So those are the, the, the biggest, uh, uh, issues besides, uh, the landscaping in the front to, to buffer this. You now have two sites. Initially, several years ago, it was one parcel. You have two parcels now. So you're going to have the in, uh, the existing driveway coming in. It's going to be widened. And that's where the old houses, that's going to be converted to office. There's a detached garage that gets knocked down. The other parcel is going to, uh, have another entrance drive. And that's where the main processing facility is going to be. There's a house on that property that gets, uh, removed as well, Joe. Uh, hours of operation are the, uh, the hours that the commission went with originally. And that is something that we have to monitor. And lastly, is the quarterly, and we brought it up tonight on other projects, the quarterly progress report. And the, while the property's being upgraded, the commission wants a report done by an engineer that this is being constructed in accordance with the site plan. And if there are any deviations, they got to come back to the commission. So quarterly monitoring reports are being provided as well. So all of those issues are important. Essentially, staff follow the template from the original. It, it's very detailed, as Leon knows, because he discussed the, the, uh, the, uh, earlier SEP uh, approval. But now you have two parcels of land. It's a larger building, nine thousand square feet. And you have, uh, all these other activities. The equipment was, uh, reduced. So it was consistent with the original approval. All those things have been addressed. And you've got the, uh, final plans already. So the, the, the final plans have been received. We just need the protocol measures. And, uh, staff will be providing the reports to you.
Alright, so is there, um, any other further discussion from the commissioners?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, Cam Brozzi. Uh, so unfortunately, you're not on.
Right.
So the voting will be, would be five.
To, yeah, the regular members.
Where is it in here about what I asked for about with the, or what they're going to bring in that site? Where's all that?
The manifest?
Manifest and stuff like that. Where's that?
Uh, that is on D, and we need to expand on that. On page three. Applicant has indicated the operation of the facility will be conducted with normal business. All, all processing will incur inside the new processing building. A noise baseline and monitoring during operations will be provided. And manifest shall be provided.
For all material?
For all material brought to site.
On the, on the asphalt and on the, on the cement, on the concrete?
Oh, we, we put that right on the plan, remember? Acceptable material. You want to? Want that?
Yeah, no.
Add it again?
People added in on this, it's here.
Okay.
Because if it's not added on here, then it doesn't seem to ever to get done.
Well, this gets recorded in the land records, along with the site plan.
No, I understand that. Site plan's one thing if you look at it, but this is not going to be on. This is where we have a problem with, with, it wasn't on the plan with, like McDonald's. Remember, with the other thing, it wasn't on it.
Yeah, there's, uh,
And follow that. Right. Um, and so how am I going to know if they're digging up a road? What road is it coming from? Who's going to supply them in?
That's the manifest, yes. They will submit it, provide it to staff, and will provide it to the, uh,
Are they going to do testing on the stuff that they bring in?
When they have to, they make that as a, uh,
You have to make a manual where the stuff is tested.
And testing, and tested, okay.
I don't know if the other commissioners have any other questions.
You're good? Well, then we'll, uh, take a motion to approve.
You are right with the, with the asphalt coming in, all you're waiting for, and it was just cement? You have a problem with it, Rob, or nobody has a problem with it? I just have an issue with it.
That's what they do, and it's going to be in the doors.
Yeah, it seems like,
I'm not worried about it.
Specifically the business. They crush up the asphalt and they,
No, I, I understand what they're doing. I got, I got a,
Well, the cement's coming in clean. It's no rebar and all that stuff, so.
But that's right, what it's supposed to be.
Well, everything we do here is what it's,
Oh, it's supposed to be.
You know, we have to try to trust people.
Have issues with the asphalt and cement, so. As long as you put this stuff on there, I'm,
The chair will have ten motions to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve SEP two zero two two dash zero eight, file number one six four eight A.
I have a motion.
Seconds.
Motion and a second. Alright, is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
Alright, then we'll call the ball, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The SEP has been approved with the, uh, with the noted, uh, as noted. Next, we're going to go on to the, um, RA eight twenty twenty-three dash oh one. That's the regulation text amendment upon view development at one twenty-seven Main Street. That's, uh, again, they're going to be back next month for the formal SEP. This is just basically the few things that he had mentioned. The change in the height.
Well, and seven buildings.
And the bill, and the, yeah.
The number of buildings, right, but the height, I think, is the most, uh,
And four garages. And we're picking up one affordable housing unit, nineteen to twenty.
So the chair will intend a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve RA eight one twenty-three zero one, file number one zero two four E, as drafted. Second.
The motion is second. Do we have any further discussion of this text amendment?
No.
Alright, then we'll call the ball, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes unanimously. Now, Rick, do we have anything else we can deliberate on tonight?
Murdered road, right?
If you wish, sure. Uh, you can direct me, uh, for the March second meeting. We got a loaded agenda, but I'll get it done.
Alright, if you want to start writing it up. They don't have their wetlands approval.
Oh, so then we should wait.
So we, well, we can't, but we can deliberate on it and get to the point of,
You could direct that.
And the approval.
On what?
Pardon me, one twenty-five, governor.
Murdered road, the, uh,
Excavation and fill, yeah, just called it the new quarry.
New quarry.
So it's down to two years, which is what we,
Yeah, ninety thousand cubic yards. They raised the, um, footprint of the buildings, which is what we asked for. They took out the scale. They're going to put in a well. The crusher will be as far away from the, uh, butters as possible. We have restrictions on the time of crushing, um,
You have that written down, Mark?
Ten, yeah, ten AM. Ten to three, no weekends.
Right.
No holidays too. Keep forgetting, we'll put that in, no holidays, right?
Alright, what else do we want to put in there, anything?
We almost got stuff we want to put in there.
It doesn't matter, I'm going to know anyway. No, I said I'm going to know anyway, so.
Oh, that's okay. So then, anything else you want to put in there?
Um, I just, I, I have a lot of concerns that, that when they come in, that,
Yeah.
Or when they say proposed building. And we're doing this. I, I, I want to try to stay away from that. I really, you know, come in with a plan that we know it's going to be there and it's going to get, happen. I mean, because it turns out to be a disaster. It's hard for us to monitor it. It's hard for anybody to monitor it. You know, and now what are we going to do about quarterly reports? Are we going to do monthly reports? I think we need to do monthly reports. This thing is supposed to be done in two years. On guard or road? It should be done. They said, listen, and, and we're not going to give an extension on this. I, I, this has to be done. If, if it's not done, that, you know, I understand they come for an extension, but I, I don't think that this commission is going to grant an extension. We got to make sure it gets,
Leon, we can't put that in the approval.
No, it wouldn't be in the approval, but it's definitely,
Environmentally, commissioners, all the stumps that were pushed into the wetlands all get removed, yeah.
They do, but isn't that, wetlands is taken,
It's wetlands, yeah.
But I saw,
Can we plant it?
Contact concerned about the trees dying.
Yes, this is a compaction.
And, did they come up with a plan?
Yeah.
Place those trees?
Mary, uh, Mary did it with, uh, Soli, so.
Did that with Soli? Because I watched the wetlands thing on it too, and,
Fight was abused.
It, it, it still is being abused. It wasn't abused, it still is. And there's a difference about was and is. It still is. That's the concern that I think, well, Mayne has. And, uh, I have. That, uh, you know, I don't know if it's going to turn out to be what it's supposed to be and hopefully they, they do what they're supposed to do. And I mean, we're going to really have to monitor this site, I'm telling you, right now.
And it's a scenic road. It's,
It's a scenic road and, and,
That property should be left alone.
Alright, so you have all the conditions?
All in particular, yeah.
Okay, good. And I think we can deliberate on anything else tonight, right?
Four and,
Haven't continued, we have,
The, the mixtures, you want a favorable on that, right?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it.
Yes.
It covered most of our parts. They're alright.
Alright, so then, um,
It's been seven years, so they can,
Five hundred tires came out of there.
Is that unbelievable?
Five hundred tires.
This is the same,
Alright, then we'll move on to, uh, to new applications. But we know we're getting SEP on Panview. There's a SEP on seven oh seven Main Street for a church, change of use. This is, this is a subdivision on ten ninety-two Menor Turnpike.
Yeah, we're using, those are interior lots. We're using a brand-new regulation.
Interior lots.
And that church, I looked at the thing he sent me. What's the off-street parking?
The park that property has, that's the old auction house.
Seven oh seven Main.
Seven oh seven Main, oh.
I know, but you have some kind of parking there that I was,
Leon, it's huge. It's just, uh,
It must have, He has enough parking there?
Yeah.
He's got a hundred and ninety-two seats. Right?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean you're going to have a hundred and ninety-two cars.
No, no, it's worth a car. And then he has two classrooms. Did you add those classroom seats?
Yeah, and, uh, staff is, I haven't gone out there yet, so I'm going to go out there, so I'll, 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 uh, give you a holler.
Yeah, let me know on that, because I was looking at this thing. It didn't look like,
It's going to have a hundred and ninety-eight parking spots.
It's a lot.
It probably, What did you say?
It probably exists.
Yeah, total, total provided.
It's a hall at one time.
Just before that.
It's a restaurant. Never ate there, but,
One space, yeah, so they're in a ton.
It's not good.
That's why it didn't last, right?
It was impatient.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
One space per four seats is what they require.
I got it.
Yeah.
We have the two minutes.
Alright, so we have, uh, the minute, pending meeting minutes to approve. One nineteen twenty twenty-three was mailed.
I don't know if that was that far.
I know either.
Alright, so everyone has seen the minute, the minutes from January nineteenth? It was searched. It was mailed, so. Your house is going to, it was mailed tomorrow, or dropped off.
Indelible.
Was I, was I there? I don't,
I don't know.
The last packet? Was I there, Rob?
When?
Yes. Minutes?
I don't know.
Do you have them?
No, they're separate.
Anybody have? Just let me look at it.
I put them here.
Yeah, the minutes? Michael Riley's going through every file since he's been here.
She that came in packing?
Not this packet, previous.
Four, yeah.
What packet?
Last one we got. Can we just re-get them? Both?
We have table.
Table the nineteenth, Mike, please.
Alright, we'll move on.
Nobody seems to have.
To February the second, twenty twenty-three, which I believe is before you now.
Yes.
Alright, chair will intend a motion to, uh, approve the minutes as drafted of February the second.
I vote to approve February second, twenty twenty-three as drafted. Minutes, meeting minutes. Meeting minutes.
Made a motion, made a second?
Second. Motion is second.
Are there any
Ryan's out.
Modifications, discussion? February second. So we have, um, O'Reilly, Mayne, Condon, Westland, Ambrosi.
Yes.
Alright, so, um,
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Unanimously approved.
There's your minutes.
Alright, planning zoning matters. Do we have any other staff reports, correspondents?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Are we, uh, are we any, a couple of things, actually. Any further along with, uh, Amazon with the,
Yes.
That's not to be discussed at public meeting, actually.
But, yes.
Selectmen has it on the, um, the higher ups not to discuss that in a public meeting. If you have questions about that, direct it to the first selectmen's office, or you can go talk to the tax assessor. Any other comments that we cannot discuss?
No. Uh, what happened with the building across from Sippin?
Of the elderly? Uh, HUD, five months.
Five months?
We applied to HUD for, I think, five million dollars. Five months it takes.
So they got to put it past Waller?
The Fire Marshal wrote a letter to HUD. Because remember the issue with Sippin's,
They had the blast zone.
And the distance? Fire Marshal says it's fine, no public safety issue. Five months. Sorry to convey that to you.
Do they have to, they don't, they don't have to come in front of us again, do they?
No, they, they recorded everything in five years, they have.
That was a while ago we approved it, so, just wondering.
Just wondering. I saw they cleaned out that lot where the Jersey mics and all that's going, so it looks really good.
Rick, I got a question to ask.
Just can't be about Amazon.
Eight twenty-four referral. Why do all the other towns around us, like I think Trumbull, I know Westport does, require it to be a public hearing and planning and zoning?
A public hearing?
Yeah.
I've been doing this for forty-three years, never, the commission.
In Westport.
Yeah.
They changed theirs for some reason.
No, they, you have the right to change your policy and how you process it. I've never seen that done.
Well, I know Trumbull does it, and I know Westport does it.
What is it?
And I read on eight twenty-four, it says it's a legislative.
Oh, are you doing, is the legis, you mean the legislative body or the P and Z component?
No, I read, I read eight twenty-four, there's all the stuff in the paper, you hear me, but the fact of the plane and everything like that. So I read all that, and I read the statute, and I looked at the statute, and the end of the statute, what's it cited? It says the legislative intended for it to be a coastal site review and not a separate review. And if you go to that, it has, under coastal site review, it has eight twenty-four referral, so what does that mean?
Well, the normal process is it first goes to the local planning commission.
No, I have that, I got all that, I have that, and we are the ones.
Make you recommendation, then it goes to the legislative body.
I think the planning commission is the one that approves and abandons the roads.
No, planning and zoning makes a recommendation.
It's a move or, or.
Recommends.
Or to.
Yeah, but we don't.
You only recommend, the legislative body has the final say.
They can say, right, I understand that, and I, they could say, oh, you know what, we're going to ignore.
The legislative body can ignore.
Has the final say.
They can ignore. They can ignore our, no, they can't really.
No, they can't, but they have to do a.
Have to, a whole.
It has to be majority.
Majority, right?
Majority.
They can, but I'm saying, if we didn't give a good referral, they would need.
Super majority.
All the commissioners, our cons would have to vote yes.
That's correct.
So that's my concern is that. No. I thought that, you know, with the neighbors, and this guy said he didn't get a notification, and we were concerned about that, and it seemed to blow up in our face.
Yeah, the notification requirements make this, met the state statutes.
I see what that was, but when I read the statute, it says something about, in the back there, that I didn't really go too deep into, but it said that it was, it wanted to be like a coastal site review, which I know about the coastal stuff, or legislative intended for it to be that way, instead of a separate review. They wanted it to be together as one review. So I don't know, that's my concern about that. And I was, like, when I looked at Westport, they added it in. I don't know if they got into trouble or something, or somebody took a portal, I don't know what happened there, but they added it in in big black letters.
All right, is there any other?
That's what I'm saying, because I think that we.
Commissioner reports?
Just Pepper Street, it's all torn up again. I don't know what they're doing.
What's going on there?
That jaggy, all, Pepper Street turn is.
I'm just thankful it hasn't been a bad winter.
It'd be worse.
Horrible, why do we be in big trouble?
It'd be worse.
And the other thing is, is that they haven't addressed the property I talked to about.
I know.
At Diplo, I don't know how they're going to do all this.
No, they have to address that.
I looked at that.
Chat's better.
It's horrible, I mean, that is so horrible.
Water just sits there.
Sits there, and comes down that thing, you wouldn't have to leave it. It was your driveway, you have a heart attack, and you saw this.
It's going to get done.
And it's bad over there, I don't. Tell you the truth, Rick, I don't know how they're going to fix it. I haven't, I didn't see them fixing it too good.
V and L Engineering will be a person.
All right.
Well, I just have one more.
Up, sorry.
The zoning regulations, so we've got a lot on our plate.
For the meeting?
Can we meet at the end of the month?
For the Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Oh, the twenty-seventh, that's right, yeah.
Is it still good?
At five thirty.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh, yeah. I didn't know if anybody changed their plans.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, okay, that's all.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second, second, walls and Ted, say hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned at nine twenty.